Welcome, everyone. This is the Special Board of Education meeting for Thursday, May 6th of 2021. And Ms. Roach, if you can call the roll.
Ms. Gallin?
Here.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Here.
Dr. Baxter?
Here.
Ms. Sidon?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Present.
I'm here. And Mr. Kerber?
Here. We have a quorum. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Item two on our agenda is public comment. We do not have any that were received for tonight's meeting. So jumping on down to item three is a Board of Education workshop. It's the only item on our agenda remaining for this evening. And with that, I would like to introduce Jim Burgett, who is rejoining us. Jim was here two years ago, just following the Board of Education election. And he gave a wonderful presentation and workshop to the Board of Education at the time. So we are thrilled and delighted to have have him back. A little bit about Jim. He has taught and served as principal and superintendent at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. He was twice named Administrator of the Year by his peers and has won many other awards. He also serves on boards for many organizations, following a full career as a working educator. He is now the lead member of the Burgett Group and focuses on providing exceptional professional development to schools and school boards and district administrators. His book, The Art of School Boarding: What Every School Board Member Needs to Know, has been, again, influential with this Board of Ed in the past in terms of helping us to determine how to navigate the world of being a school board member as effectively as we can as individuals and as a team. And so with that, we wanted to invite him to walk us through for the next couple of hours, and I will turn it over to you, Jim.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to be here. I am going to take my mask off and I'm going to tell you that I have been vaccinated. I was vaccinated. I'm told that I was vaccinated so long ago that I already need a booster. So I am protected and I will keep my distance from you because it's very hard to present with a mask on, especially if you're wearing earrings like I do. They go up and down and a lot of problems. Don't get old.
What's the alternative?
You're already there. Anyway, I'm really glad to be here. And before I get going and start talking to you, I want you to know a little bit about who I am. So if you haven't seen this. My name is Jim Burgett. I was born in Evanston, Illinois, at St. Francis Hospital, two weeks before my wife was born in the same nursery. I was born around the same time Thomas Edison invented electricity. My family lived in Des Plaines, home of the first McDonald's, where I ate this meal on the day it opened, which is the same day that Albert Einstein died. I started school in District 62 at West School. I went to O'Gahnwin Junior High, where I met a cute girl in seventh grade and married her nine years later. We both attended Maine West, starting the day that the school first opened. I then went to the U of I, the University of Wisconsin, and ended with two degrees at Northern. My first teaching job was at the Elizabeth School in Joe Davis County, where I became elementary principal in a few years, and then became superintendent and high school principal at the same time, a job created in purgatory. As the years flew by, our kids got married, all three of them, and we had three college graduations. There were school skits, cheerleading tryouts, community functions, and along the way, we went through a consolidation and a new district was born. In 1992, we moved south to Highland, Illinois. No, not Highland Park, Highland, Illinois, which is 35 miles from Busch Stadium in St. Louis. But it doesn't make any difference if you are a Cup fan and if your son and grandson are Cup fans as well. I loved working at Highland and loved being a Bulldog. We earned a few awards along the way, for the district, for individuals, and from the community. On June 30th, 2004, at 4:30, I retired. I now work for the Burgett Group, and I enjoy helping schools with finance as part of the Stiefel team. I also speak all over my home state and from Alaska to Wyoming. And I write books about leading schools, about school law and liability, books for teachers and principals, and a book for school board members. I even dabble in making movies. I have worked with nine governors, including these two. What I value most in life are my faith, my wife and kids, my grandkids, and their future and the difference I can make along the way. And that, in a nutshell, is who I am. So I want to tell you just a little bit about who I am. Now I want to find out a little bit about who you are. I know these three because they were here the last time. But I want to go around the room and I'd like you to answer a question. You can pick any one of these questions. Makes you most proud of the district? What's the biggest challenge you're facing? Or what do you enjoy the most about being a board member? And for the three of you and Teresa, is it? You, you've only been board members for what? A couple of weeks, a month, or something like that? And you for?
Two months.
Two months?
Yeah.
So I don't know. The biggest challenge you're facing probably is trying to figure it all out at one time. Let's see if you can answer one of those questions. Your choice. Let's start with you, Kevin. Tell me how long you've been on the board. Remind me and answer one of those questions.
So I'm in my third term. I've been on the board 10 years. This is starting my second two-year stint as board president. And probably, you know, what I enjoy most about being a board member is really the governance aspect of helping lead the strategic direction of the district. To me, it's, you know, I try to focus on the what and let Lane and his team focus on the how. I think that's always in my mind, how I've tried to differentiate what my responsibilities are versus their responsibilities. And again, the partnership that we can create to impact the lives of so many people in our community, 26,000-plus students, 3,000 employees, and then the countless others in the community that in some way are impacted by the education that we create and the future that we provide for our students and ultimately for our community is what I enjoy and get the most pride out of doing this work.
I just feel very privileged to be a part of the school board that my son attends school in. So I've been on the parent's side of it and tried to be as active as I could and with the opportunity presented itself. Now that he's in eighth grade and going to high school, I just felt like it was a great opportunity to see how the other side works. There's so much figuring it out. I thought it was. I just feel really proud of all the work that I now know the school board does and the education that my son has received. So I'm just very proud to be a part of this.
How about you?
Hi.
Your name?
Kathy Baxter.
Kathy, okay.
I'm going to say I'll go with the first one is what makes you most proud of your district. It's very appropriate since this is Staff Appreciation Week, and I really believe that it's the people who make up this district that work here that you hear stories every day about how somebody has gone the extra mile and that the kids just love them and the parents respect them. And I just think we have more than our share, probably, of super people.
Good. Well, that's, was that one of the reasons why you ran?
Yes, because I believe in this group of people.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, great. What makes me most proud of our district are the people in the community that make up District 202, our staff, our students, and our parents. We faced a tough year last year with the pandemic, and hopefully we can put that behind us. And we've gone through being the fastest, third-largest, third-fastest-growing school district in the entire country for a period of about three to four years, and then the economy collapsed, and we had to deal with that, where we had to lay off a good number of good staff members. And then the pandemic hit. And one thing I've learned is you're never going to please everybody, but you have to do what you feel is right in your heart. And you seek input from the community, but ultimately, the community elected us to make a decision. You know, 50% like it, 50% don't. But in the end, we all can come back together and move forward and help our kids be successful when they leave District 202.
You've seen a lot over, what, 20 years?
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen a lot.
You've seen the room. When you first started, how many schools did it?
About six or seven. I was, I've been on the board. This will be our 19th building that I've been a part of.
And this is 31?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's amazing. That's a lot to have. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Barb Sidon, one of the new board members. For me, probably what the first one would be the easiest to answer, what makes me most proud is just the sense of community, considering how large our school district is. People say first they're from Plainfield as opposed to from XYZ School within Plainfield. We have crosstown history that continues to this day that really brings everybody together. You know, to Rod's point, I think this last year has created some divisions in our community, but that would be the thing I would like to see us overcome and kind of get back on that track and keeping that small-town feel while providing a cutting-edge, not completely cutting-edge, but certainly a high-quality urban experience within that small town.
Okay, thank you.
And? Well, I'm Heather, and I've been on the board. This is my sixth year. And I would say that probably what makes me the proudest of the district right now is the adaptability. In the past year, there's, everybody's had to adapt to so many, so much change. And it's happened relatively painlessly. I mean, we have had a group that, within the community, that was opposed to everything we did, but our teachers adapted well, the students, I think, adapted pretty well, and the community, I think, adapted well to the problems or the complications caused by the pandemic. But along those same lines, kind of what Barb was saying, I think that probably the biggest challenge we are facing right now is finding a way to bring those that weren't happy about the decisions that we made and unhappy with the district and the board, trying to get them back into the fold again and reunite and bring it all back together again. And that's probably our biggest challenge.
And you're not alone in that.
Hi, I'm Toni. This is day nine of being a board member. I'll go for the biggest challenge, and I think it's what everyone else has touched on, just living through this pandemic and seeing how it has impacted our students, the families, the staff. And I feel like we don't necessarily know what our biggest challenge is right now. We've got to welcome these kids back. We have to figure out how it's impacted their overall growth and learning and how we can shift to make sure that we're helping them get to be the best versions of themselves that they can possibly be.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. I will, I do want to say this, that this round of training on the School Boarding 101, which is what I call this, is the most unique that I've ever done because, first of all, a lot of boards have three or four new members, more than ever before, three or four new members. I think a lot of people just didn't run again because it was just so difficult during the pandemic. So there's a huge influx of new board members. Secondly, a lot of districts are facing exactly what you guys talked about. They're facing issues of decisions that the community were not, was not 100% in support of. And how could they be? How could they be 100% in support of things that are brand-new, total, total change? In-home learning, every aspect of it was a total change. And how can people adapt to it? And if you had a district where there was 100%, it would probably be one of the smallest districts I've ever seen because it's just, it was just almost an impossible thing to do. And there are some boards that have just struggled with that and are now struggling with the reunification. But I do want to tell you that I believe what I'm seeing is the reunification is going to be a lot smoother and a lot easier than you think because people are going to be just glad to have some sense of normalcy, and they're going to put the other things behind them. Decisions that were made by any board, by any administrator, by any health department, by any group of government to send kids home or send people to their home to work were tough decisions. And I think as a country, we've done phenomenal, well, phenomenal, it's not perfect, but we've done really well in adapting to it. So I just want you to know, you're not alone, and I like the fact that you're aware of it and you're going to work towards considering that in your leading. And I always like to thank school board members and administrators because this is a tough job. Being a board member is a tough job. Nobody said, gosh, get on that board. You make a lot of money, you have a lot of friends, you make no money and you have few friends. But the fact is, people will thank you, people will appreciate you. They're just not the ones that are going to come up to you. The ones that are going to come up to you are going to want something or they're going to have an opinion to share with you. I mean, you're going to have to learn how to deal with that and handle it. I'm going to give you some tips on how to handle it that I think are very important. And I want to thank you for four things, really, that you do. Service, leadership, oop, let me go back. Service, leadership, vision, and teamwork. And we're going to talk about how you can do the best job incorporating these four things in your role as a school board member and your role as a school board. Because what I want you to think about tonight, more than anything, is your function as a unified group as opposed to your function as an individual. Because as an individual, a school board member pretty much has no power. As a group, you have all the power because it takes a majority of you to make a decision and do something. And you have to develop that teamwork. You have to develop that cohesiveness. I think, I think you said it in your opening comments, that one of the things that's important about being on a board is working together and having common goals. So we're going to talk about that and how to do it. And I want to thank you for dealing with cave people. This is one of my favorite things because cave people are citizens against virtually everything. You will deal with them. You will deal with people that you will not change their mind. You will not convince them of anything because their mind can't be changed and they don't want to. This group is the minority. It's the minority. And the biggest fear that I have with new board members is that they let the minority occupy the majority of what they're thinking, and you can't do it. You can't do it. So we'll talk about that a little bit. I failed to mention the fact that you all get a copy of this book. Unfortunately, the publisher ran out. There was a huge hit on this book this year, and I'm expecting, I told Lane that I might, I thought they might come yesterday, but I will ship them to you so you all get a copy of the book, and I hope you will find some value in it. So I kind of got an idea of why you do it, but the one thing that I also want you to be thinking about tonight that is probably the most important thing of why you're doing is dealing with kids. What's the best for kids? And in doing that, you have to kind of ask yourself a couple of questions. What was it that you hoped to facilitate or accomplish when you ran for the board, you were elected, or you were fortunate enough to be appointed to the board? What was it you want to facilitate or accomplish? What is in the back of your mind you hope that you will be able to bring to this board that the board will unify itself on? The other question is, whose kids do you represent? And I think this is extremely important because lots of times, people get on the board and they have a kind of singular-focused group. Maybe it's the ages of their kids. Maybe it's, like you said, did you say you have one going to high school?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the only thing you have in the district right now? So maybe your focus is going to be on what's the high school doing, you know? And who works with special ed? Do you work with special ed? Okay, you do? Okay. And maybe your focus, because your expertise in special ed is going to be dealing with special ed kids, you know? And what kids you represent? And I think at some point, you're going to realize that you represent every kid, every child, every child in the district, even the ones too young to go to the district, and even the ones that have graduated or moved from the district. And that sense of community that you were talking about, that is developed by knowing that you represent every single kid. And what is your focus? And I think the more years you serve on a board, the more you become focused on a broad and open mindset. You may at some times have a narrow focus and you may sometimes even have a close focus, or I don't agree with that, or I don't agree with that, or I'm not going to go there, or whatever. You may have that. And you may have a very narrow focus. The longer you serve on a board and the more you get involved with the intensity of the comprehensiveness of this job, your focus will become broad and open. Successful boards will have a broad and open focus. I think, I like what you said, too. You were very eloquent in what you said. In fact, I wish I taped it. When you said, "One of the things I like about is governing and not running," I'm putting words in your mouth, "and helping develop policies." And that's the broad and the open aspect. And that's really kind of difficult for board members sometimes to comprehend, and it takes a little bit of time, I think, to understand why that's so important. But the main thing that's important is that you never lose focus of why you're here, why you're in this room, why you're in this building, and it's the kids that are in this district. Those are, that's my focus. Those are my grandkids. I do everything I do. I do for my kids and my grandkids. I keep, I keep going to schools and I keep talking to teachers and I keep trying to train them because I want this to be a better place for them. And it's all for kids and even the littlest one. But he's not the littlest one. I have a great granddaughter. But, do you know they swept the Dodgers? Oh, I think maybe. Steve Jobs has a great quote, which I want to use as kind of the foundation of this presentation. The quote was, "We're here to put a dent in the universe." He shared that quote in front of a massive audience of tech people, talking about what we do in society, but not just what they do in the tech business, but what our role is as a human being. Our role is to put a dent in the universe. And when I read that the very first time, I said, gosh, that's a teacher. He's talking about a teacher, an educator, a principal, a board member, a bus driver, a custodian, anybody that works in the school business. We're here to put a dent in the universe. We're here to change the universe one kid at a time. And if you don't think that's what you do as a board member now, if you don't think that now, you will think it later when you realize the broad consequences of what it is you will do or you will accomplish. When, a few years ago, I think it was in 2012 or 13, I was sitting at a compositium and there was a discussion about board members. Board members were having a discussion and they were saying, you know, the one thing that we get a lot is technical help. We get help on how to run a closed meeting, the rules, but we don't really get any help on how to do it. You know, we get what we should do and shouldn't do in the checkmarks, but we don't get the things that aren't checkmark type thing. And there were a number of sitting around the table and they kind of pointed me and said, you need to, you need to write a book on that, you know? And I thought, gosh, I worked with so many boards over my career, and it would be helpful if board members could hear from other board members about what works and what doesn't work. So to create the book, I did surveys with literally hundreds of board members and superintendents, board organizations across the country, 22 of them, and a number of experts in the field. And I asked them to tell me, what is it that makes a board member effective? What is it that a board member needs to know or needs to do and maybe can jumpstart their occupation as a board member or their profession as a board member with a little bit of help? And we put this book together, and my goal of the book would be to give to people who want to run for the board, to hold the book. You know, if you're going to run for the board, read this book and you'll get a little idea. And it took a life of its own. And one of the lives that it has taken is that many veteran board members ask to hear this presentation every two years, whether they have a new board member or not, because it reminds them about what it is that makes a board member effective. And the one thing that I have not had in doing these presentations now for eight years, I guess, is I've not had anybody tell me that doesn't work or that's not right. I get, I get the opposite. I get a lot of feedback saying, that's a good point and that's good. And I, I'm very happy to stand here and take all the applause for that because I didn't write the book. I put together the book, but board members gave the information. And of course, being on a board and being the superintendent for 30-some years and having a number of boards, you know, I had some experience myself. So what we put together was a book called The Art of School Boarding, not the Science of School Boarding, not the Checklist of School Boarding, not something that you can know and just check off and say, I did that, I did that, I did that. And it's the art of school boarding, and it's called The Art of School Boarding because working with people is not a science. Working with people is an art. And that's all you do, is you work with people. School board members work in a group like this. You don't build anything. You work together with people and you come up with ideas and you talk about policies and you talk about different things. People. What kinds of people? Well, cooperative and supportive? Certainly, that's the majority of the people you're going to work with, and philanthropists and volunteers. That, those two, is there a reason why?
Yeah, Matt, this keeps, this keeps going black. I mean, it just goes black for a second and then comes back on, but do you know why?
It's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might be.
It's all right with me. I know what the science is going to say. But if it comes up different, then I'm really going to be worried.
Is there connection or is the HDMI cable or something?
All right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, man.
In most, in most districts, in most districts.
Matt, you just stand right there. Maybe that'll fix it. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
What's the revenues?
You keep one hand on the computer, one hand up in the air, and then it'll work. It was working just fine for the first 20 minutes.
In most districts, when I ask administrators or teachers in presentations, what percentage of the parents you deal with would you call cooperative and supportive or volunteers and philanthropists? And in most districts, especially districts like this, that have a good reputation, this is, this district has a great reputation across the state. If you were, if you were to talk about a Plainfield, you would be talking about the top three or four districts in the state. You'd be talking about a district that has financial records that have been very good. I'd say for the half, last half dozen years or so, been balanced budgets. You would have districts that have grown considerably in size, districts that hold their own score, districts that have the quantity of students like you do. Those things are hard to do. So how do you do? I mean, I work with some of the big ones. I'm very, do a lot of work with Rockford, and they're a little bit bigger than you. And you have a great reputation. You're doing a fine job. And I would like to guess that the majority of the people that you deal with in terms of parents and community people are cooperative and supportive, volunteers and philanthropists. But there's other types of people. There's cave people, which you talked about, and there's scoops. Scoops are people that like to stir it up. You know, that's, that's their goal in life, stir it up. And then there's alligators. I'll show you what alligators do. Watch this. They like to come out from the water and bite you in the butt when you least expect it. And those are the types of people that you have to deal with, too. And dealing with all five of those divisions of people is an art, and it's called building relationships. And you have to build relationships with all the cave people, which is not a winning solution. So what do you do? And how do you build relationships? And how do you build relationships? And how do you deal with the public? Well, when we put together the book, the number-one thing that came out from board members as the most difficult thing of all is dealing with the public. That was the number-one thing. Not coming to board meetings, not learning the plethora of information that you need to know. It's dealing with the public. How do you deal with the public successfully? And I refer to it as handling a complaint, but it's not always a complaint. Sometimes it's a suggestion. Sometimes it's a pointed comment, which is kind of like a complaint. So how do you handle complaints? And there's a two-step process. And this is not totally invented by me because part of this comes from conflict management studies. But part of it also comes from board member communications. So let's talk about how to do it and see the process. Handling complaints is two steps, and the two steps are, one, receiving the complaint, and two, returning the complaint. And I've got an acronym for both, and I want to walk through both of them. And I want to give you a way of handling a complaint and being successful in your role as a school board member. When you catch the complaint, I want you to think of the acronym called COM. This is all in the book, this part. COM is an acronym that has a word that means something as well as an acronym for steps. Because COM is what you need to be when someone comes to you and complains. When someone comes to you, offers a suggestion. When someone comes to you and now that you're on the board wants you to do something because you're on the board, or get an answer, or make, change something. And sometimes, when they come at you, you get offensive, or you get defensive, or whatever. And the thing you have to do first is remain calm. Conflict management will always tell you when someone's trying to develop a conflict, face the conflict with calmness, okay? But my COM stands for four steps. The first step is C, which is compliment. That means give the person the compliment. It does two things. One, it says to them, "Slow down. Catch your breath. Just calm down. We're going to be okay here." And the compliment might be something as, you might not know the person from Hill of Eats, and the compliment might be, "You know..." What was your first name again?
Kathy.
Kathy, okay. This might be Kathy saying, "You know, I really appreciate your concern. I appreciate that this is really bothering you, and I'm happy that you're taking the time to share it with me." That's a compliment. Happy you're taking... It's not an assertion or affirmation of what the person's saying. It's not, "Oh, man, I would really be ticked off too." That's not what you're going to say. You're going to say something that's a compliment. And the compliment might be, if you know the person, or you know the child they're talking about, or you know the teacher they're talking about, you might say, "Oh, you're talking about your son, John. Your son, John, and my son, Bob, were great friends." If I remember right, he was just a wonderful little... Every parent wants to hear what? Something nice about their kid. That's a good compliment. Don't make it up. It's not true. But find something that focuses your mind on something that's positive, that notches down the level of compassion in the discussion and gets it more on a level field. Compliment. Not easy to do all the time. The next one is extremely important because the next one sets up the response that you're going to give them in the second part, when you throw back the complaint. You're going to say, you're going to ask them the chain question. Let's just make up something. Let's say somebody comes up to you and says, "I am really upset about the teacher in third grade over at Winston Elementary School. I don't know if you're familiar with that school or not, but they want a kid's absence. They keep that kid in, and the kid can't have any lunch, can't have any recess, and that's just not right." Now, that might be a complaint that you give. And here's your ask question. What did the teacher say when you brought this concern to the teacher's attention? Because you know that if it's a teacher she's complaining about or he's complaining about, she should ask the teacher. That's the chain of command. Every parent knows that. They've read the handbook. They've all read the handbook, right, Lane? They signed it. So they've all read it. And they know what they're supposed to have done. And you don't say this. You don't say, "Did you ask the teacher?" Because that's a little insulting. You give them credit. You say, "What did the teacher say when you asked the teacher?" Positive way of saying it. It's a positive way of saying, "You should have known to ask the teacher. What did the teacher say?" "I'm not going to ask the teacher. Teacher will hold against my kid." Well, then, what did the principal say when you talked to the principal? You try to go up one notch. "Well, I didn't bring it up to the principal. Don't bother going any farther because it's pretty obvious that they haven't addressed the question, but they're going to have you do it because you're a board member." You're going to get that. If you haven't, you know, you guys have only been on this for a few weeks, a couple months. But you're going to get this. And you're going to get it in some form or another. And you're going to have to know how to respond. And you're going to have to know how to ask that question. Now, you don't have to say anything more when they say, "I'm not going to say anything to the teacher." You don't have to say anything. You just ask that question. And then you just be quiet. That's the L. Listen. Hard thing to do. You know, I talked to a lot of teachers about how to handle conflicts with parents. And I have them do this, and this is the hardest thing for teachers to do, is the L part, is listen. Because lots of times, the teachers know the real situation. And the parents giving you the kid's story. And the teacher knows what really happened. I'm not saying all teachers do everything right, but most of the time, they do know what's going on. And it's real hard to listen to things that are wrong. But you've got to listen. You've got to let them talk. You've got to be quiet. And then, at the end, after you've done that, the M is to mimic or repeat the complaint so that they understand that you've heard them and you can relay what it is they said, indicating that you understand what the concern is. So let me see, if I understand this right, you're really concerned about the policy in the elementary school that when a student is absent, they need a day or two to get their work done, and they shouldn't be penalized. That's what your concern is. That's just repeating what they said with no editorial comment. Hard to do. Absolutely important that you do not editorialize. You just repeat it. And they go, "Yeah, that's it." I always like to say, "Is there anything else? Is there any other aspect to this that you want to share with me?" To let them know I'm listening and to let them know I really would like to know if there's more. See, usually by then, there isn't, but sometimes there is. That's COM. Compliment, ask, listen, mimic. And hopefully, you're not so calm you fall asleep. And then the second stage is throwing the complaint. And when I mean throwing the complaint, you're going to hand it back to them. That's literally what you're going to do. You're going to hand the complaint back to them. And the steps to this one are pass. And that's what I want you to think. Pass the complaint back to them. P means point to the right person. Point to the right person. And in your chain of command, this district's chain of command is about 400 people, I think. You have directors and assistant directors, and you've got all sorts of things. But in the school, it's usually teacher, principal. You know, if it's an organizational thing, you might say, "Well, I'm not sure if that's assistant superintendent or superintendent, but here's where I think you need to go, ask that question. I really think you need..." You know, if you haven't talked to the teacher, you really need to talk to the teacher. "Oh, I'm not going to talk to the teacher. I will not talk to the teacher. Don't you understand? I'm not going to talk to the teacher." Then you really should go to the principal and share your problem with the principal and let the principal work with the teacher. I mean, you know, this is the school system. This is the chain of command. Were two of you a teacher too? You were a teacher? Are you still a teacher?
No, I'm retired. I was a teacher and a principal.
Oh, where?
Chris Alons.
Here?
Yes.
Oh, good. So when did you retire?
Uh, 2014.
Well, good for you. How many years did you serve here?
Forty.
So you... Really? Start when you were 12?
No.
Anyway, you get this. You get this chain of command. And it's very, very important, isn't it? That you go to the right person. And if they say, "I'm not going to..." And they adamantly say, "I'm not going to go to that person," then here's something you can say at that point. You can say, "Look, if you're unwilling to talk to the teacher or the principal, and you really want to share this with you, I will call the superintendent and facilitate a meeting between you and the superintendent. I will do that." That's the only thing that you can do if they absolutely refuse. And I wouldn't say, I wouldn't push it any further than that. I would just say, "I'd be willing to do that." Because in most cases, they're not going to do that. In most cases, they're going to take what you tell them and think about it, and they may in fact call the teacher or call the principal. They may in fact, because it's good advice you're giving them. Point to the right place. A is avoid solving the complaint. I use the word avoid because I'm being nice, okay? The word should be, "Don't you dare solve the complaint." That's what it should say. "Don't solve the complaint." And here's why. Not your job. And it's just like stepping in a pile of, you know... Because when you go to solve that complaint, when you voice an opinion, trust me, that opinion will be repeated. That opinion will be told. "Oh, I talked to the school board member. I talked to that Rod guy, and he agreed with me. He said, 'Oh, this situation you got in this grade school just stinks. You should all be fired.'" I mean, they'll embellish it. And now, you're out there, and now you've got to backtrack. You should, you will get there. You will get there if you don't avoid solving the complaint. Look at me. All the things I'm going to show you today, remember this one. Avoid solving the complaint. You're a board member. Board members don't solve complaints. That doesn't mean you don't have a role. I'll give you that in a second. Pass. P-A-S. Point, avoid, and now you share. You share your role as a board member. Wow, you know, Betty, we've been friends for a long time. I know you've got this concern. I know you think now that I'm on the board that I can go to the board meetings and change things. But here's what the role of a board member is. We're part of the government's governance team. We're part of a team that sets high-level board policies. We are not part of the administration team or the teacher team. We don't facilitate changes on the level of action. We're only up here. We're only governance. And I really want you to take your problem or concern to the right level and let them work it out. And if you do that and you feel that they have not listened to you or are not, don't care, then please call me back, and I'll facilitate that meeting with the superintendent. See, that says, "I do care. I want you to be successful. And here's how I'm going to help you be successful. If you can't get results, please call me back, and I'll call the superintendent, and we'll facilitate a meeting." See, you're not going to be a part of that meeting. Will you be there? No, I won't be there. I can't be there. It's not my role. On the chain of command, I'm here, and below me is the superintendent. That's my level. I don't go beyond that unless I've been told to, and it's an agreed-upon thing. But I'm known. I don't go below that. That's the chain of command. "Well, I don't understand that." "Well, do you have a job? Do you know how it works? Do you go past your boss? You know, do you skip the chain of command? It just doesn't work." So you share your role, and you do it in a way that says, "You know, I really want to help you, and I think I am," by sending you to the right place. And lastly, is summarize. "John, I really appreciate you stopping me here in Walmart. You know, don't let it bother you that my meat is spoiled. I really enjoyed this conversation."
Sausage Island.
I hope I've given you some information that's helpful. I really do hope you go to the coach and talk about those tryouts that you're concerned with and find out what took place with that tryout situation. And if that doesn't work, go to the athletic director. And I really appreciate you taking the time. I imagine this has been frustrating for you and your family. See, at no point did I say, "You're right or you're wrong." I've only directed them to go seek the right help. And I've summarized it. And I'm telling you, this is what I hear. This isn't my opinion. This is what I hear. I have a file full of people who have implemented this, especially board members that are new or board members that have been in trouble. And they had a lot of districts where board members have gotten in trouble, and they've reinstated a different program. And they just, and I always say, "Send me a text if you want or anything. Let me know if it works or it doesn't work." And I got a file full of people that say, "This works." And it takes some practice because you want sometimes to say, "You're right."[1549.78] Or you don't know what you're talking about or whatever. You can't. But there is one more step after you've got calm and pass, and that's this. And this is very important. And in a district this large, it may get, you may get a direction other than what I'm telling you. But in a district this large, you may be told by Lane to, to share the comments that you have with certain people rather than with him, because it's so big. But in most districts, it's notify the superintendent. And that doesn't mean pick up the phone, call Lane, and tell him that somebody stopped you in Walmart and was complaining about their kid getting a C when the average was a B+. What you do is you maybe send him a quick text and you say, "I just want to let you know that I talked to a parent, and the parent had a complaint about a teacher in the fifth grade. Here's the parent's name. Here's the teacher's name. I directed the parent to talk to the teacher." That's all you need to do with minor things. Now listen, there's, there's a couple different levels of complaints. One, there's legality, sexual immorality. There's those kinds of things. They, they take on a whole life of their own. Somebody comes to you and says, "We've got a junior high coach that is fiddling the boys." That's, that's, skip, skip this. Just say, "Thank you very much. I'm going to call the superintendent. I'm going to have him get in contact with you." We need to know that. Then you do it. That's different. You know that. But most of the cases are going to be fallen into this category. See, send a quick text to Lane or whoever he tells you to send it to, and you let them make the decision if others need to be notified. And here's what happens in a district. I don't care what size the district is. Those things are noted. And if they're repetitive, if, if the teachers in the Windsor Elementary School are being complained about on a very high number, they, they make a note of that, and they, they deal with that. So you let them know, and you let them know appropriately. Your link in the chain of command is the superintendent. What do you not do? You don't call the teacher. You don't call the principal. You don't call the athletic director. You don't call the assistant principal. It's not your job. That's stepping in a bigger pile when you do that. Because now, not only have you not handled the complaint right, you've now checked over the chain of command. That's an awful lot. You know, that's the longest section we have, because I think it's the most important section. Are there any questions or comments about that? You three have been doing this for, okay?
Six years, 430.
Forty. That feels like forty.
Twenty-two years, twelve years, something like that. Something like that.
Is this, is this entertaining?
Yes, completely.
Do you get, do you get yourself in big trouble when you side with them?
Oh, absolutely, you could. Yep. That's why I stay away from the Sausage Island jewel.
No, I mean, it, it just, I was sharing with Heather before. It just happened to me this week about high school graduations. And I said, "Talk to Lane," because it's not, it's a district-wide initiative, action. It's not a board-level decision. We've been very clear. That's an administrative decision about how we're handling graduations still in the pandemic. I said, "Tell the parent, go talk to Lane." Because again, I couldn't, I'm not getting involved in that. You know, because again, I can weed right in, and then I make his life difficult and the four high school principals' lives difficult if I weed into that.
Right.
And just to clarify too, I mean, just for the benefit of, of the new board members, exactly what he has on the screen is, is what we would want to do. I mean, it's, it's to go to Lane. If you, if this scenario plays out, just notify Lane exactly as Jim had said. I mean, even though we're a large district, you know, Lane's our only employee, and we want Lane to be in the loop on things that involve us so that he can, you know, do his job most effectively as he reports to us.
And I've never met a superintendent yet that took any of those emails and threw them in the garbage basket. They don't do that. They go into some file, some way of being recollected, even if it's just a notion. You know, it might be the parent's name and your name, the date. You can look back and see.
That's the.
History. Okay. That's really an important part. Now something has gone crazy.
Man.
Psychedelic. I see here. We'll go back up here.
There we go. What was that? A UFO?
Okay. You adapt the universe by building relations at every opportunity. And I think this is extremely important, because as people begin to trust you as a board member, they, they begin that trust every time you have a relationship communication. Every time you represent the board in a proper and appropriate way, you build a relationship. That doesn't mean giving them what they want. It means giving them what they should get, which is good information and good direction. So it's very important. So let's talk about, quickly, and that took forever, but let's talk about the 10 things that my surveys indicated were the top rules of school boarding. Okay? These are not legal rules. These are the top rules of being an effective one. And they're in no particular order except the last one. It is number one. So this is kind of like the old David Letterman countdown, top 10. Number 10, and you just alluded to it. You said, "He's our only employee." You only hire one person. You hire the superintendent. Now, does that mean that the board doesn't hire all, all employees? Yes, you do. You sign the papers, you approve their employment. But you don't go through the process of interviewing, screening, vetting, all the many, many steps to get down to the final applicant. You don't have any part in that. Boards don't have a part in that. What you do have a part in is hiring the superintendent and directing the superintendent to establish a process for hiring. And your superintendent in this district has an entire cabinet of people that help with the hiring process. And if you hire a bunch of losers over a period of time, the person who's going to pay for that is the superintendent, because that's their job, is to recommend and hire and bring to you hiring good people. So here's what a lot of board, board members say to me at the beginning. Isn't that rubber stamping what the administration gives to us? The answer is yes, it is. Absolutely, it is. You're rubber stamping the applicants that are brought to you because you have directed, as an organization, you have directed the superintendent to go through the process and bring the best people to you. So you're rubber stamping that, because that's what you've asked the superintendent or superintendent team to do. So you hire a good person to do that. Now, when you hire the superintendent, you go through a lengthy process, unless you're really, really, really fortunate enough to have somebody within the system who just. You, you, you develop somebody to do the job. That's great. That, that's, that's a bonus. You hire one person, the superintendent. Okay. Superintendents come pre-trained, licensed, certified, and experienced, even if your superintendent has never been a superintendent before. Have you?
No.
Okay. That superintendent is pre-trained, licensed, certified, and experienced to be a superintendent. You don't second-guess that. Or you wouldn't have hired him. If you're going to second-guess the person, then you shouldn't have hired him in the first place. So if you hire a principal to be a superintendent, they, they've gone through, they, they can't be licensed for this job unless they've done all of this. You've got, boards have got to remember. You're very lucky to get an experienced assistant superintendent that's been here, been part of the district, and just to transition from a great superintendent to another great superintendent, you are blessed. And trust me on this. I deal with hundreds of districts a year, hundreds. And some, some of them are in huge messes. Some, some of the messes are directly related to not hiring the right person. You really have to put a lot of, a lot of credence in hiring the, the best person. And then the second thing you do is you set goals for the superintendent. You hire a superintendent, and you set goals for the superintendent. And I always think back about setting goals for the superintendent. I have something that reminds me of, it reminds me of the iPad. And I'll tell you why. Here's my, my story about this. And on April 3rd of 2010, that's only 11 years ago, the first iPad was introduced to the world. The very first iPad was introduced to the world. Now, I don't know if you know too much about technology, but the iPad changed everything. The iPhone didn't change things. The iPad changed everything, because it's app-driven. And it created a market for apps. And then your phones started to flourish, because your phones are now mini iPads that run off apps. And we've gotten to the point where we think an iPad or any type of tablet, an iPad is everything. It can do everything. And honestly, it practically can do everything. An iPad can do just about everything. Be careful. iPad can't do everything. Watch this.
Emma. Oh, my God. Oh, I'm.
Huh? I can't fit, iPad can't do everything, and neither can a superintendent do everything. The superintendent is not the plethora of information on every single topic, just like the President of the United States isn't, just like the governor isn't, just like any legislator isn't. They, they only have the information that is presented to them, in many cases, from experts below. Now, was your, what was your strength coming into? Finance over curriculum or curriculum over finance?
Finance.
Finance. That's, many times, superintendents come in, and they're strong curriculum, they're strong finance, they're strong facilities. And the other things, they have to rely on other people. Boards need to recognize that when you set goals for your superintendent, you have to realize that superintendent can't do everything, and you need to provide realistic goals and give them the resources to accomplish those goals. So if it's not their level of expertise, you need to provide their level of expertise. Why, why are the goals of the superintendent so important? Because the goals of the superintendent are really a reflection of what you want to see the district do over the next one, two, or three years. If you, if you want to see the district move into a different direction than when you have your meetings to set the goals, those things get discussed. Not in a separate room without the superintendent, with the superintendent, with the superintendent being involved. Which also brings up something. When do you meet without the superintendent? Never. The only time is salary negotiations. Only time. Because if you say, "We're going to meet, and, and, you know, we'd like you to sit in another room," that's just, that's just a death sign. And that's not how you solve problems. It's not how you work these things. Number eight. And number eight might be number one in terms of more people saying, "This is a problem," than anything else. And that is, hello, allow leaders. See, that's all you have to do. Kick it. Allow leaders to lead. Allow leaders to lead. Another way of saying that is, "Don't micromanage your boss." Okay? Micromanage means, "Don't micromanage the superintendent." I know you're not going to micromanage the principals or the teachers, because they're not even in your line of discussion. Your line of discussion goes from board to superintendent. And micromanaging diminishes the ability of the superintendent to accomplish their job. What is micromanaging? Here are 10 reflections on micromanaging. It could be a number of different symptoms of micromanaging. The frequent need to call or email. Immersion in the work assigned to others. In other words, if there's a project that's been assigned to technology department or to facilities or to curriculum, you get immersed in it. You want to know the details of it, not your job. Look at the detail instead of the big picture. When you've got a program in place, good example, building a building. Okay? Some boards want to be there, and they want to pick out the colors, and they want to, you know, check the concrete and things like that. No, that, that, that's not your job. You get the reports on it. Maybe you want to go take a look at it. You call the superintendent. Superintendent might be really excited to have a look at it. Okay? Discourage others from making decisions. That's micromanaging. It's also wrong if you're discouraging other board members. Not consulting others before getting involved. That's micromanaging. You know, you get involved, you don't ask. Monitor what's least important. Expect regular reports on miscellaneous things. All of these things are symptoms of micromanaging. How do you know if you're micromanaging? Because new board members don't always know if they're micromanaging or not. Am I micromanaging if I ask a lot of questions? Maybe. Am I micromanaging if I, if I want to have a deeper report on something at the board meeting? I want to know the miniscule details of something? Maybe. But how do you know? Well, here's how I always tell you to do it. And you, you're lucky. You ask your board president. Maybe in private, just call him up. Do you think this is micromanaging? If it is, how can I get the information by not micromanaging? How can I satisfy my need without processing micromanaging? And the board president will tell you. Your board president will tell you. I don't say that in all boards, because I don't know the board president. I know your board president. And he'll tell you. You can also ask Lane, and he might not tell you. Why? Because, "Do you usually tell your bosses when they're doing something wrong?" Not necessarily, you know. He might, but he might not. Might be uncomfortable saying, you know, that. He might say, "Oh, that's fine. You're not micromanaging." And then what we're really doing is leading you into a habit of micromanaging. Look, I'm going to tell you something that's the honest to God truth. God may strike me dead with a light bolt of lightning right here, if this is not the absolute truth. A superintendent told me recently that a board member contacted him every single day for a minimum of 30 minutes. He wasn't the board president. Every single day. And when he would think that his day was done, and he didn't have to spend a half an hour with this board member, he'd be walking out of his car, and the board member would be coming in. And they'd go in, and when he came in person, it was an hour. Talked to him, board president talked to him, and the guy continued to do it. Just developed tremendous frustration. It also prevented the superintendent from accomplishing something and created a lot of friction. It's really important. And here's the other thing about micromanaging. Most people who micromanage are not ill-intented in doing it. They don't mean ill-intent. They, they may, they may be doing it because they want to be brought up to speed. For new board members, the four of you, it might be that you want to be brought up to speed right away. Or it may be that you have expertise in a certain area, and you want to share that expertise. You know, "We're talking about construction, and I'm a construction contractor." Something like that. And it's usually not ill-intent, but it usually doesn't work well. You need to avoid it if you can. And you need to discuss it if you can. And that's usually, you know, a one-on-one conversation with an experienced board member. We talked about knowing the trick, the chain. This is so important, knowing the chain. And it's so difficult, the bigger the district. I worked, my very first job, my district was 335 kids, K through 12. The chain was really simple. Me, the teacher. There was nobody else in between, you know. And, but you get here, and you, how, how many administrators do you think you have in the district?
Oh, a couple, a couple of hundred by the time you, yes.
Sure, with 31 schools. How many students total?
25,000, give or take.
Yeah. So, so the chain is, is complicated. You need to know the chain. You know, the, the chain in the military is really simple. But the chain in a school district gets, gets really complicated. But not for you, it's not. For you, it's not complicated. For you, it's, it's here. You are the captain. Here's the board. And underneath it is the superintendent. That's your chain. Board, superintendent. Now, below the superintendent might be four assistants. Is that right?
Correct.
Four assistants. And underneath them, you have directors of the buildings.
Yes.
And it's, it's very, very complicated, but not for you. When you're pointing somebody to the right person, in most cases, it's not complicated either, because it's either a teacher or a building property. And you can kind of say, "The teacher." But you need to know the chain. And why do you need to know the chain? Okay. Remember I told you that one slide was maybe the, the number one important slide? Avoid solving the problems. This is the number two most important ones. Break the chain. Break the trust. The chain, break. So if you go around the chain, you break the trust. There's a new, there's a board that seated their members two weeks ago. Would that have been your first meeting about two weeks ago? And it was the, the day, the day after the first board meeting. And I got a phone call from a administrator in that, in that district. And, and he called me, and he said, "I had a board, board member called me up last night and told me a whole bunch of things about what's going on in the board." Now, this administrator is a very close friend of mine. So he was calling me in confidence, not asking me to get involved. Well, what should I do? I said, "What's your gut intent? I said, what's your gut intent? What's your gut telling you to do? Go talk to the superintendent. I said, that's what I'm telling you to do. Go talk to the superintendent, because that board member doesn't know, or hasn't been, hasn't listened, or doesn't understand that he has just broken the trust by telling the principal things that weren't public. And trying to be helpful to the principal. Whereas the principal really recognized, I shouldn't be having this conversation with board member. Break the trust. Now, that's a fixable offense. That's happening early in the game. You know, that shouldn't, that should be corrected right away. And he did, and it was. I can tell you that. But now, here's the questions I usually get about this. Well, I've got, I've got some friends that are teachers. I can't talk to them anymore? Oh, you can't never again? No. Of course you can. I've got friends that are principals, that are administrators. Can I talk to them? Certainly you can talk to them. Well, how do I, how do I accomplish this and still talk to them? Well, you don't talk to them about board business. Nor do you ask them their opinion on topics that you're going to discuss at the board. Well, that seems counterproductive to the fact that I know people in the community that might be helpful. Maybe, maybe it is counterproductive in a certain degree. But it's way more counterproductive when you're given a sense of responsibility and community trust to operate at the high level that you operate. What is your budget, $350 million? Is that what I read?
Yeah.
Something like that? Well, you're, you are responsible for $350 million in taxpayers' money. And, and you're at the executive board level. You are not at the level of going on and sharing big issues with the people who they're going to affect if they get asked, or maybe if they don't get passed. You don't, you don't do that. So you're sure you can talk to them. And, and some of the things that you might say if they ask you questions, which they probably will. Well, what's really going on in the upstairs in the office? What's really going on up there? You know, it's such a difficult job. It'd just really be hard for me to even tell you what's going on. I mean, you can, you can bystep it without acting like, I can't tell you. You could just say, you know, or, or that hasn't even been discussed in a, in a format in which the public can have that information yet. So I really don't know. You'll learn, won't they? They'll learn, won't they?
Yeah.
You'll learn how to say no. You'll even learn how to say no to really, really, really close friends. Because if you don't, you might say something that is really damaging. You've got to be careful. Break the chain, break the trust. And if you're having a problem with that, then talk to the board president, who's your liaison, to the superintendent, or the superintendent directly, about maybe a problem you're having with a relative or a friend pushing you, and you don't know how to handle it. Ask for advice, ask for help. Do you share these things with your spouses? I mean, if you have a decent marriage, you share things with your spouses. If I said, don't share them with your spouses, I would be totally stupid to say, to think that you wouldn't share them with your spouses. But you've got to make sure your spouse knows that this is one thing that stays in that bedroom. And even, there's going to even be some things that you don't, you won't feel comfortable bouncing off and getting, getting their opinion. I've had a few of those things, and I've almost felt guilty about it. But when it's dealing with a person's livelihood, and you have information that may or may not be true, you just want to be very, very careful.
I've got a question.
Yes.
I was on the receiving end of one of those comments. I was the questioner, and received almost exactly the response you described of, it's a complicated situation. And I felt like I was being, as a receiver, I felt less trust for that person. And, you know, probably would, it, it made it difficult for me to feel like they were doing their job correctly, because I was getting, getting a less-than-direct answer.
Sure, and I can, I can understand that. And what they probably should have said to you was, I'm really not at liberty to discuss this, because we're not at that point yet where we can. And, and as a
Yes.
As a board member, see, this is what you can say. As a board member, it's been ingrained on us until it's a public statement that we really, we really can't share. If you, if you're having, if you really want to pursue this, talk to Lane. He's, he's open. Always give him Lane, always.
Okay.
No matter, tell him that Lane likes calls between 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. And never text Lane once, always text Lane on a chain. But does that make sense?
It, it does.
You didn't get that answer, though, did you?
Well, I got the answer that you initially recommended, which was that this is kind of a complicated thing.
Yeah.
And that was, yeah.
But that's a true answer. It is complicated. But you can also say, I just can't tell you.
Sure.
And then will you feel
Yes, I feel like that's
A better answer?
Yes, for, for me personally, anyway.
Then go with it.
Okay.
Because it is the right answer, too.
Okay.
You know? But in most cases, I think you're going to find out that my first answer is going to be the one you're going to say, because it is going to be too complicated. Because is there any, is there a whole lot that you do that's black and white?
No.
That's the problem, you know? And you'll see that more and more. But that's a good question. And just make sure that you don't break the chain. Okay, know your roles. Knowing your roles is not hard, it's not complicated. Actually, it's pretty simple. But it also can, can be a little blurry at certain points. So let's go over the main roles. What does the superintendent do? What's his job? Well, the superintendent, according to the school code, and I see some, one of you has the school code right here. This, this is the school code. It used to be, the school code used to be about as big as my book when I started. And am I, am I not, it's coming out in two versions, two books?
No, they just publish it now every other year, because it's gotten so large that they don't publish it every year.
Okay. By the way, who knows what's in this book? No one knows what's in this book entirely. That's the truth. That's why you hire school authorities. And they have to make reference to some of the crazy things in the school code. Your superintendent doesn't know what's in this book, but it's his job to find out what's in this book. And your superintendent, according to this book, is your CEO. He's the chief executive officer of this public corporation. How do you spell chief executive officer? B-O-S-S. That's how I always think of the superintendent. He's the boss. Who makes the decisions on a day-to-day basis? The boss. This is a company. There's the boss. Does he have guidelines? Yes, you develop the guidelines. Your policy manual sits next to the school code. And that helps him be the CEO. But he runs it on a day-to-day basis. He recommends applicants for appointment to the school staff, according to the school code. That's what we talked about. You tell him to recommend people to hire, and then you rubber stamp those applications. Do you always do it without discussion? No. Of course not. Is it, is it appropriate to ask questions? Sure it is. Is it appropriate to say, no, we're not going to hire these people? Maybe once. I can tell you this, when I was a superintendent, if my board said, I'm not going to hire the people you were going to recommend, I wouldn't be there very long. Because they had no faith in me. Now, if you say to the superintendent, the last three people we hired, we had to dismiss, you know, we have a problem with your hiring. That's okay, that's a different thing. But you're still going to do, you're going to follow his recommendations, because that's what you tell him to do. That's the superintendent's job. The third thing that the superintendent does is promote strong staff development. That means monitors all the training the teachers get. Make sure that the teachers understand how to do in-school learning and all that stuff. And that's his job. His job is to make sure that the teachers are able to teach and grow. That's what a superintendent should do. Those are in the school code. The superintendent also interprets the needs and makes recommendations to improve education. That's kind of a no-brainer. The superintendent should be the one who, the cabinet comes up to him and says, we're not doing very well in third grade math. Our third grade math is going down the toilet. And the superintendent needs to interpret what they're telling and make recommendations for improvement. That's his job. Here's the one that boards like the most. The superintendent, it's his job to implement whatever you decide, if it's policy or decisions that affect policy. This is one that you need to think about really carefully. And when we get towards the end, and we do the seven O slides, I'm going to talk about the implications of asking the superintendent to implement your decisions and policies when you vote on them. But that's his job. If four out of the seven of you say, we're going to do this, he has to do it. That's his job. If four out of the seven say, I'm going to do this, he has to do it. We'll talk about that a little bit more. That's, that's his job. Manage the fiscal and administrative operations of the school district. You might say, he's the final, the final say in all the money and the operations, but that's not necessarily the truth. The board and the superintendent take joint responsibility for the fiscal management and the administrative operations. So you break the law. It's not just his can that's on the line, it's yours as well. You have that ethical and legal responsibility to make sure that the law is followed. But that's his job to do it. Okay? You're going to find it's also in your job description as well. So what does the school board do?
Can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, because
That's a long question.
I will. I'll drag this out. Way back in 1910, kidding. You made a comment that if four of the seven give a directive, the superintendent has to do that. But to clarify that, isn't that only for things over which the board can rule? Doesn't the superintendent have their own things where they can be the deciding voice and not?
If you, if you, and if you remember, it said policies, Tom. If you develop a policy, and the policy is a 4-3, that policy goes into effect, and he has to enforce it.
I get that. I just want to clarify for others that it's, it's not anything in the world where if a board member said, this is what we're going to do, he has to do it. It's connected to
4-3. It's, it's, it's connected to a majority, and 4-3 is terrible. I'll get to that later. That's a whole nother topic. Okay? And you'll see why in a second. But if the board decides by majority that this is a policy, they voted, it's in effect. It's his job to enforce that policy.
Yeah.
Now, let's make the assumption that there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of involvement, and he was in there, and he said, this isn't going to work if we do this, blah, blah, blah. And it still got passed. He still has to enforce it. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, what do you do? You govern the district, you don't manage it. You govern, you don't manage it. Big difference. Big, big, big difference. I'm on the board, I'm chairman of the board of a hospital, and I sit on the board of 15 hospitals. And we don't have anything to do with COVID shots, or respirators, or anything like that. But we set the policies. We set the, and they've been horrible. One of our policies this past year was to eliminate 26% of all of our employees, which was 5,000 people. Because we lost so much money in the first three months of COVID. $60 million in the first month. And, and, but, but, well, I didn't go fire anybody. That was just the rule. I governed, I didn't manage. Okay? Continue to shape a mutual understanding of the purposes of the school district with the community. Very broad statement, but very important. This is the part that I like the most about school board members. School board members come to the board meeting with some feeling for the community. It may be a limited feeling. It may be a feeling from an eighth grader going into high school. And her, or him, him, had his friends and their input, and their sports, and their activities. But it's, it's input, it's, it's at-home input, right? And you may have input from former employees and friends in the district. And, and you, you know special ed, and I didn't get, what's your profession?
I'm a professional volunteer.
Yeah, wonderful. So you've been volunteering for the district, and you have that input for, for that. So you bring that in, and you merge it all together with other people's opinions. That's Moore's responsibility. That's, I think, the fun part about being a board member. Communicate the goals and monitor the performance of the district. You are the board, Plainfield Board of Education Chair, ladies and gentlemen. When something is good here, you're the ones that go out there and tell everybody. You brag it, you brag about it. You can almost even brag about it because you're part of it. Communicate the goals and monitor the performance. You've got this new building coming up. It's going to allow us to do all-day kindergarten. Okay? For kids that never had this opportunity, it's a wonderful thing to do. Wonderful. You communicate the goals and monitor the performance. If something bad has happened, you monitor what, and communicate what you can according to board guidelines. The board agrees. This is our public statement. It's a public statement, you can share it. And you do that. That's, that's your job. What else? Select the superintendent. You oversee basically legal and ethical standards and responsibilities, just like the superintendent does. You do it as well. If the superintendent is fudging with the numbers and not, not doing attendance rights, so you get more money, and you're signing the papers. I do believe board members still sign those papers, board presidents?
They have, yeah. Electronically, we submit it.
Well, you, you just Sign off on it. If there's corruption there, there's corruption here. So you have to make sure that legal and ethical standards and operations and responsibilities are maintained. And you analyze your own performance, and this is so key to being an effective board, is to do what you're doing tonight. Analyze your own performance. Get workshop training. Go to the school board convention. Go to your IASB division meeting. Do you do that?
We do, yes. We, we have board members have opportunity to go to those, absolutely.
And do it. And, and, and talk about it. Analyze your own performance. And this also means this. If you're not in sync in a, a year, if the seven of you aren't in sync in a year, you need to have an executive session and talk about getting in sync. What's the problem? Why, why am I, why are we getting flack from the community? Why is the community hearing things that, that, that's not public? What's going on with, with ourselves? An executive session, you can do that. You can talk about your own performance. You can bring it in the school board association. You need to reset when you're not set. And don't think that boards don't do that. They do it a lot. And sometimes it just gets things going on a really good foot after that happens. And especially happens when you have a lot of new board members who really don't know the complexity and don't know the ins and outs of being a board member. It's just a matter of getting hold of it. It's a hard job, it really is. Okay, is it always black and white? And the answer is absolutely not. Nothing fits into little boxes. That's why this is an art and not a science. What do you do if you don't know? If you should be doing it, the superintendent should be doing it? If I should be questioning it, or the superintendent should be questioning? What do you, what do you do in these situations where it's not clear or you think you might cross over the line? The answer is you communicate, you talk to each other. Especially talk to the board president, or superintendent, or another board member, and just ask and say, you know, what, I just feel uncomfortable. What can you do? Communicate, because it's an art, not a science. And you won't get it all right on the first shot. Number five is be prepared. This is pretty simple, but very important. Be prepared when you come to board meetings. I assume you're all electronic? You serve everything electronically, or do you
Unless, unless a board member requests paper copies, we do both, then.
Okay. So you, they, they all get copies, and when do they get copies of the board stuff? A week in advance?
Not quite a week.
Three days?
Yes, at least three days.
Okay, three days is really good. That's, that's a good lead time. You get, you get the material, you come to the board meeting. You're expected to have read the material, but you're human beings, and you might not have read the material. And I always told board members when I was a superintendent, because I had a lot of former board members, and during harvest, they would get their packets opened, they'd come to the board meeting, and they would be sealed. They weren't even subtle about it. And I would say, look, if you can't read it, just tell us when we start the board meeting, and we'll work with it. We understand. You know? If it makes you feel any better, our hospital meets every other month, and my board packet is a three-inch notebook, it's one and a half inches. It's a three-ring notebook, one and a half inches high. It's usually 250 to 300 pages at each board meeting. You better write. So there's a lot of work in that. So be prepared at board meetings. Ask for clarification ahead of time if you don't know what's on or in the board packet. If you don't know what the acronym is, you don't know what the topic is, you don't know what the information is, call the superintendent. No problem with that. Every superintendent wants to have the board packet clarified before the meeting. Now, look, if you call him, and you've been on the board for six years, and you call him, and you've been on the board for six days, and you both have the same question, he knows that this is a topic that we really need to discuss at the board meeting. But if you ask him the question, and you ask him the question, and you ask him the question, he knows that this is something that the new board members don't need, or don't know. And we're going to have a little training on it. So it helps him prepare for the meeting. Ask for clarification ahead of time. Understand that all information is not public. Listen, forget, forget executive session, okay? At board meetings, people are going to say things that should not be repeated. They're gonna ask questions about a teacher. They're gonna ask questions about this. They're gonna bring up issues that should not be repeated. Why shouldn't they not be repeated? They haven't been substantiated. You don't know if it's really an incident that happened. You don't have the facts, and if you repeat, you could be hurting someone with the wrong information. So all information is not public. Even if the meeting is broadcast over, like this one is, all over the world. Millions of people are tuning in right now. That doesn't mean you repeat things that shouldn't be repeated because they haven't had an opportunity to be substantiated. You know what I'm talking about. As best as you can plan a meeting, and as best as you can run a meeting, sometimes those things come out. All information is not public. No surprises at meetings. This is a fundamental rule for all board meetings. School, community, PTA, whatever. You have an agenda. The agenda is information that people have planned to discuss, have done homework on, and are ready to discuss. You don't, as a board member, say at some point in the board meeting, "I'd like to bring up an issue at the Burghetta Elementary School that happened on Thursday between Mrs. Brown and that young boy." You know the boy I'm talking about? The one that causes all the problems and has drugs? That would be like, "What?" You don't do that. No surprises. You don't bring up things that aren't on the agenda, and neither will the board president or the superintendent. There are some exceptions. Something that happened just between the time the agenda went out, or between four and six, that you need to know. And he and he will discuss it and make sure, and they will tell you that this is gonna be something that we need to discuss because it's a board meeting. But if you have a surprise, you let the president, or the board, or the superintendent know prior to the meeting if it has to be discussed. In most cases, it won't be. Because legally, you can only discuss what's on the agenda. It's a public meeting governed by those rules. Okay? No surprises. Don't be afraid to seek clarification during the meeting at any time if you don't understand what's being discussed. You know, you're asked to vote on something, "I don't get it. Excuse me. I don't really get this. Could you just back up a step and explain it?" That's the purpose of the meeting. Okay. Being prepared in the public. Don't share what you don't know. Don't share what you don't know. Remember, all information is not public, which means don't share what you do know sometimes. Because it might not be public yet. You might not have the facts. Remember, calm and pass when you're in the public, and be a team member. Never throw a team member under the bus. Never throw a team member under the bus. If you want to disintegrate the effectiveness of the board, then act as a single agent and be 6-1. But that's not how you work effectively.
You know, we had a situation a couple of years ago. A board member basically discussed something, put something out on social media about what was discussed in our closed session. And this group took it, that all seven of us supported what the board member said. It was the furthest thing from the truth. It wasn't. It was just the opposite. You know, it was 6-1. And it took us a long time to recover from that.
Right. And the worst thing to do is to respond, because it just starts to...
They think you're talking for all of us.
Right, right. The only way you handle something like that is you have a board representative speak for the board, and maybe put out a statement, not on social media, but a statement somewhere. Because social media will pick it up and sort it out. It says, "Point of clarification. The board did not make a decision," or whatever, whatever it is. But that's the worst thing. And then how did it go after that? Was he or she reprimanded?
Yes.
And did it get resolved?
Yes.
See, it can get resolved. Those things can get resolved. Gary, okay. So here's the thing you always have to remember. There's two sides to every issue. This is very important to remember. And you have to understand both sides to every issue. Okay? Now, here's how I word this. It's called perception and reality. Perception is what the community and the staff think. That's what the community thinks. That's what a staff member thinks. That's what a parent thinks. And reality is the truth. And the hardest part about being a school board member is to know and understand the perception out there, but to learn reality. This right now, what could you say about this? Politics? The vaccine? You know, everything that the country's divided on, it's perception and reality. Sometimes reality is defined by what your perception of it is. But it's, there's seven of you. There's seven board members. The team is a minimum of eight. How many attend?
How many board meetings attend?
How many administrators attend the board meeting?
Five or six, for sure. Five, for sure.
Cabinet?
Cabinet and Lane.
Okay, so five. Every meeting?
Every meeting.
Okay. So your team is seven and five. Twelve. Team of 12. And you can't, you've gotta work together. You gotta know reality. You gotta discuss reality. And you have to share perception. Number four is to be ethical. And this is the part where I'm gonna rely on the handout that you're gonna get. You're gonna get a copy of this presentation. There's 15 slides here that I'm not gonna go through. I'm gonna go through a couple of them. But I want you to get them and read them and ask questions about them. And I'll tell you why there's 15 slides. Because it's based on the school code of conduct for the state of Illinois. Sidebar. I have worked with 22 states, the organizations of school, of board administration. 22 different states, and I've worked with the code of conduct in all 22 states. And I personally think Illinois is the best, by far. Makes the most sense. Not the longest, not the shortest, but has great concepts that board members need to look at and need to digest, to understand what is expected of them, what is their code of conduct. You probably have seen this. And if you haven't seen it, make sure you do. And I encourage boards to take five minutes out of a board meeting and read one of these and discuss it at every board meeting. Read the first one at the next board meeting, read the second one at the next board meeting. So in a year, you'll go through all 12. Five minutes. Read it, and just say, "Questions, comments, thoughts? How are we doing with this?" And perpetually do it, and this code of conduct becomes something that you absolutely understand. What I've done is I've taken the code of conduct, and I've written... Oh, thanks. I've written what it really means. Let me go down to a couple. The third one here. "I will recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a board meeting." This is number three on the code of conduct. What does it mean? This is how I've done this. It means, "Learn quickly that you have one vote, and you are not a majority. Make no promises to anyone about how a vote may proceed, and do not campaign privately with other board members. Your effectiveness and trust will be quickly compromised if you work outside the system, and rightly so." So what I've done is I've taken the 12, and I put commentary that came from the responses of my survey. What board members say you really, really need to know. Let me look at number two, and then I won't do anymore. "I will avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from my position, and shall not use my board membership for personal gain or publicity." Telling a coach you can help him or her if they reciprocate with a favor, steering the board into hiring the dairy who purchases your milk on the farm, buying gas from your brother's station, pushing to hire a relative because they are a relative. These are types of conflicts of interest that must be avoided. They cost you trust and respect. Not illegal, but unethical. There's a difference. Code of Conduct is something I really encourage boards to go through and read, and spend some time. So let me skip through all of those slides. I really hope you will take the time to read. And let me get down to a little bit of a summary of the code of conduct. Understand, this is kind of a summary of the board's code of conduct. Understand the concept of confidentiality. Understand what you can and you can't say. And by the way, if you're not sure, it doesn't hurt at the end of the board meeting just to go up to the board president at Lane's. "Is this something that we should..." You know, "Is it in public meetings? Is this something we should discuss?" Maybe not, because we don't know if it's true. You know? You'll get to the point where you'll get it. Follow the rules of closed executive session. If you're in closed executive session, here's the rules. You don't say anything that happened in closed session. Period. You don't repeat it. Is it a law? No, it's not a law. You won't go to jail if you talk about what's in closed session. Some people think it's a law. You'll break the law if you talk about... But you'll break the law of ethical, professional conduct, which I think is even a stronger law than a criminal law. And you certainly break the law of trust. Board members are to be trusted. That's the key thing about board members. No meetings outside legal meetings. It's absolutely illegal for two or three board members to conspire to vote outside the meeting. Can you have a conversation about something? Yes. Can you talk about how you're gonna vote, or encourage somebody to vote? Absolutely not. Can three of you meet and discuss? No. Can three of you meet socially? Yes. As long as you don't talk business. Can you come to my house for dinner? I have the board at my house for dinner every Christmas. Illegal? No. Yes, right?
No, the new people have to invite us all for dinner.
I thought your point at Glenn, that that was gonna be one of Glenn's goals for his first year as superintendent coming up, was...
No unofficial polling for information. This is really wrong. You don't ask teachers what they think of an issue. You don't ask principals what they think of an issue. You don't call up parents and say, "We're gonna vote on something. What do you think about it?" That's unofficial polling. And board members have a hard time with that. I kind of get that. I kind of get that. Where you think, "Well, I don't think that's really wrong to find out what people are thinking about it." There's nothing wrong with listening, but there's something wrong with asking. It's called polling. And it's not ethical. Board meetings are not town hall meetings. Do you have a lot of people attend your board meetings? Depends on the issue.
Yeah, well, last year, I mean, this past year, yeah, because of...
COVID and making them putting everything online.
Do they talk?
We have public comment.
Okay. And how do you handle public comment?
We limit it to two minutes per comment, 20 minutes total, and it's not a dialogue. It's an opportunity for them to address the board, and the board hears it and moves on.
And it makes no... Thank you very much for your input.
Correct, that's it.
And then they do comments on the Zoom meetings. And then those are noted, and then, to the best of our ability, they're answered by administration.
Are they signed?
Yeah, the names of whoever is on the Zoom is there. But what we have not done, though, is answer those questions live during the meeting as they come up, because to me, that would be the same as people sitting out there asking a question, and that's not what we do.
Right, and that's discussing something that's not on the agenda. So you can't do it. And a lot of, I'm finding, the new board members are having a hard time with the town hall concept not being a board meeting. You know, having people come in and just, you know, ask, "Let's talk to them. Let's answer their questions." It's not a town hall meeting. It's a board meeting. And it's operated by law. Law is approved agenda. It's not your choice. That's the law. And there's a difference. Okay. Be a team member, number three. Well, I really like the be a team member part, because I think it's the key to success for boards, is to work together and be a team member. This might seem a little crass, or basic, but it's not. A board has power. A board member has none. That does not mean a board member has no importance. They have great importance, but they don't have any power. You can't go out and tell somebody what you're gonna do because the board's got approval. You can't... I'll get that done. I had a board member call me, the first year he was in there, he called me up and says, "I want Mrs. Byer fired." Do it. I'm a board member. We had board member 101 right then, you know? Can't do it. Board member has authority when they are part of the majority that passes something. There's no eye on team. There's no eye on board. That doesn't mean you're not important. It means you don't have the power to do anything individually. Okay, team members. I coached basketball for a long time. I know I'm short, but I'm still, I coached basketball. And I loved John Wooden. He was my mentor. I read everything that he ever wrote, and I thought he was the greatest coach ever, because he really put academics before athletics, and he really put faith and morality and spirituality into his program, and he put teamwork. He was a teamwork-type guy. And one of his favorite quotes was, "It takes 10 hands to score a basket." In your district, it takes 24 if there's 12 of you. It takes 24 hands to change a policy. Everybody participates. That's the teamwork. Can you do it on a 4-3 vote? Yes, you can. You can. But that's not necessarily the same. We'll get there in a second. Together, everybody achieves more. That's team. And let's talk about 7-0. Is 7-0 the rubber stamp vote? Or is 7-0 the vote approved by seven people after a process that involves discussion, communication, compromise, and collaboration? That's the 7-0 you want to get to. How do you do that? Okay, I'll give you a little scenario. I'm gonna go back to when I was a superintendent. This is how we used to do it. I had the greatest board president in the world, and he ran the meetings just superbly. And when we have a topic, and he felt like there wasn't unanimity amongst the board members about this topic, or maybe he couldn't read you because you didn't say anything, but you looked kind of like, "I'm not into this." And maybe he couldn't read you because you were really tapping your foot, and you were kind of angry about it. And he could sense that something was happening, but there wasn't any discussion. Instead of calling the vote and having the vote be 5 to 2, "I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no because I don't know enough. I'm gonna vote no because I don't like it." Instead of doing that, he would say, "Let's do a straw vote." If we had to vote right now, how many of you, without any problem, would be in support of this? Raise your hand. Your hands didn't go up. What? Why didn't you raise your hand? What is the issue? Are you struggling with something? And you say, "I don't understand it enough. I don't know if I can support it. I don't get it. I just don't get it." What parts don't you get? And then we have a little dialogue. And maybe Teresa over here can answer something from her perspective that you didn't get. Or maybe you could answer... That's not what you told them before. Maybe Heather could say, "Well, I didn't understand it either, but here's my perspective." And then you say, "Well, I just don't believe this is right. I don't think this is what we should be spending our money on." Well, what would you do? Well, I would tame it down. I wouldn't spend it all over here. I'd put some of it over here. And Rod says, "That's not a bad idea. Maybe balance it out a little bit." And you have what's called... I know this is a tough word in our political climate right now. But you have what's known as compromise, and discussion, and edification, and learning, and partnership, and teamwork. Maybe, maybe you say, "Let's table this, and let's get more information out for everybody." Because if you don't have enough, maybe there's more that don't have enough. And maybe let's look at the balancing of the money, as you're suggesting. And let's come back next month and talk about it. See? And then next month, another proposal. Lane's got another proposal. And you've had time to study, and maybe some of the input that everybody else gave, and your problems have been resolved. And now you say, "Here's the new plan." How many would go along with this? Seven hands.
Wouldn't a lot of that be solved by reading your updates? And then if you have questions, asking them beforehand, right?
Some of it. Some of it. But when, and it should be when you're experienced, and you know all the terminology, you know all the inner workings. But when you're new, you don't get all that. And then it's presented, and you just don't feel like...
You make a decision.
Yeah. And you say, "Well, you know, just because I don't get it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. Go ahead and vote on it, you know?
No.
6-0, or 6-1, that's okay." Well, but that doesn't answer your question. That doesn't develop the team. Your lack of knowledge is important to everybody else, because, trust me, if you say, "I don't get it," there's somebody else here that doesn't get it that's not saying it.
Yeah.
You know? And if you say, "I have problems with this," somebody else might have a better solution. And that's how you get to 7-0. And that's how you get to 7-0. So I always say, 7-0 is the way to go, but only when it's this 7-0, and not this 7-0. If you're voting for it because, well, I'm not going to be the person that votes against it, and you don't get it, that's not teamwork.
Yeah, if I could just add, I mean, and that's important to me, to hear from you all if you don't feel like you have enough information, if you don't get something. Because again, we don't even want to bring something forward to a meeting if we don't have to, if we're not all have enough information, right? I mean, I would hope honestly to not even get to the point where something's on the agenda and we haven't vetted it through. And one of the things we've really focused on in recent years is making sure that any big decisions that we make, not routine kind of things like, you know, payment of bills every month, but any big decisions that we're making, that we're not doing those things on a short-term timeline. We're doing those things, I mean, Glenn knows this in curriculum. I mean, how long do we talk through major pieces of major decisions that we're making, right? So that you all can have as much information as you need by the time it comes forward for a vote. And again, make sure you're asking those questions. One of the reasons why we're changing our committee structure, to not have any overlap of committees now, so that every board member can, you know, hear and sit in on every committee, so that, you know, everyone has the information that hopefully you need by the time we bring something on the agenda and we're looking to take action.
And that's why you are an exceptional district. And that's why you're regarded statewide as a district that knows what they're doing, is because of that. Because you don't, you don't just vote. You study, you do things, you have an excellent reputation for that. So you should be proud of what you just said. And don't take that lightly. That's a very, very strong, a very, very strong pillar in effective board leadership, is when you prepare people, work through it before you get to that vote.
Jim, if I could... I can, in my eight years back here, I think, as superintendent, I can't remember maybe one item that did not go through committee, or that did not, for weeks at a time, be in our weekly update or thing of that, where it just came to the board right away, and that's the first time they're seeing it or hearing of it. We try to give them a monthly time, you know, it's informational this month, but next month it will have to be an action item, something of that nature. I feel very strongly, and Kevin or any of the previous other board presidents who, you know, the superintendent and them develop the board agenda, it should not be a surprise that something comes through on an agenda for the board meeting that hasn't gone through committee, at least.
Right. And that's really great. And you still have to remember you have four new board members. And even though it goes through the committees, and it goes through that, it still might get to the board, and they still might not have a fundamental understanding of it. And that has to be developed, and that takes some time. And board members have to work, they have to work hard at that, too, in learning it. Okay? So that's my comments on 7-0. Number two is be honest and fair and kind. Two golden rules to make a difference. These are what I think are the two most important things, is respect the other board members. You don't have to love them, but respect them. You don't even have to like them, but respect them. Respect the fact that they have input, too. And, you know, when you work together at this kind of a level, you end up kind of liking each other. You do, if you're working well. And work hard reaching the objectives of the group. This isn't your show, it's our show, and we're towards that. And here's number one, and it has to be number one. It has to be number one. If you're not in here because you have kids, there is no reason. Resign, that's what I'd like to see you do. Because this should be the primary focus, being on a board, being a teacher, being an administrator, working for a district, is loving kids, because it's all about kids. Love kids. And I always used to say this, and a board member taught me this when I was, I was a board member at 30, age of 30, I mean, a superintendent at the age of 30. And I had a board member who was pretty wise, pretty smart guy, and he said, "At the end of every board meeting, every board member should ask themselves these two questions. How did my action tonight help kids? How did the decisions we approved help kids? So how did my input help kids? And how did our input help kids?" You ought to be able to answer those questions correctly. They're not always easy to target with a kid. They're not always all, but most of them are. How do they help kids? That's the focus of it. You dent the universe when you practice the art of school boarding. Gosh, I mean, two hours is just insane to try to cover all the things that you do when you're on a school board, and things that you have to think about. But I will tell you this, it's not always easy what you do, but it's always important. And if you walk away, if you go home and you go, "I wish I'd never gotten involved in this," it's just too much pressure, it's too much this or that, that means you're involved, you're doing something. There's going to be pressure. There's going to be times when you go home and you think, "Maybe, yeah, maybe this is a wrong decision." There's also going to be more times when you go home and you say, "We did some really good things for kids. We're really making this district better by what we're doing. We're working hard." Kind of like teachers always feel that way. I know, I used to go home when I was a teacher and think, "What the hell? Why did I become a teacher?" And then the next day, you walk in and some kid gives you something that is just priceless, some thank you, some whatever, and it's all worth it. And that's kind of board member stuff. It's always important, all the issues, it's always important, and you do make a difference. And people like me appreciate you, and more people appreciate you than you think, and more people who have gone through this experience empathize with you. They know the dedication of being a board member. Questions? You have three minutes. I've left ample time for questions. Bang, 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 a lot of stuff. Okay, it's the kind of questions I like. Well, good luck. I'll get the books to you.
Thank you, Jim. We very much appreciate it. Hopefully, everyone found it valuable, but I know, again, I did, and I've sat through the board. So again, thank you for your time with us. You know, again, if you ever have questions, you know, these kinds of things, Lane, myself, Rod, Heather, you know, we're here as resources, you know? But again, I would just reiterate what I just said a few minutes ago. I mean, fundamentally to me, as we work to make decisions together, it's us being a team, it's us, you know, making the best decisions for kids, and making sure that you all feel that you're empowered to make those decisions as part of the group. And so, you know, if you don't feel that way, then let Lane and I know, and we'll, you know, do everything that is necessary to get you the information that you need to be able to make those decisions for the things that are coming forward for us to act on. Anybody else have anything before we move to adjourn? All right, well then, moving back to our formal agenda, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Tony's motion.
Second.
Barb's second. Heather?
Ms. Galan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Baxter?
Yes.
Ms. Ziden?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kerber?
Yes. And we are adjourned. It is 8:29. Thank you all very much for attending.